And it is five thirty PM and I will call to order this special work session of the Common Council. And um who's Adam, are you taking role? I don't see Candace.
Yep, that would be me.
Okay.
So we've got Barb Doss.
Yep.
Kathy Cobb. Jason Arts.
Here.
Isaac Shanley.
Yes.
Eileen Nichols.
Here.
Robin Klein.
Present.
The only one we're missing is Ken. Okay.
Okay, well, here from Nicola to in a minute to see if Ken is coming. All right. Adam, I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce our presenters. In the meantime, I'm just going to before we start, thank all the people who have interest in this and have joined us. This is, I know, a hot topic in our community in terms of broadband. And in advance, thanks to Jaren, Danielle, and Chris for joining us too. You guys are more the experts than us than we are. So Adam.
Yeah, so thank you for that. So yeah, as we talked about, so obviously this is being recorded. So our intention is to kind of put this out on our kind of YouTube and social media channels as this falls directly in line with our strategic plan. So in our strategic plan, you know, a lot of the feedback we got from kind of residents and obviously from the council and staff was to really do a deeper dive over the next three years into kind of broadband. What could the city do? What potentially is out there? So that caused me to kind of research a couple of different avenues. One, reaching out to the Wisconsin Economic Development Corporation, who then also looped in the Public Service Commission. And then in kind of the three-peat there, we actually got Chris Stark from UW Extension who was willing to kind of come tonight. So really what this is, is again, this is kind of one of many meetings that I think as a city, we're going to intend to have to really start looking at, you know, potentially what could be done. So what I asked kind of Danielle, Jaren, and Chris was just to kind of have this opportunity to kind of speak about what is out there as far as from the WEDC, from the PSC and UW Extension, to give the council a better understanding and also our residents to see, you know, what potentially could the city do or look at in regards to broadband. So I don't know, Danielle, do you want to kick it off?
Thank you, Adam. Actually, I am going to defer to Jaren at the Public Service Commission first since he has the broadband expansion grants within his portfolio. Allow me to apologize, my camera has not been working today, so I'm not on camera. So I do apologize, everybody. But to just kind of start, I'll defer to Jaren first and then I'll speak after him.
Sounds good.
Sure. Thanks, Danielle. As Adam and Danielle mentioned, my name is Jaren McCollum and I work for the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin, which is a state agency in Madison, primarily known for regulating utilities companies. But we also are interested and, you know, committed to expanding broadband services across the state. So I can, you know, cut me off if I'm going too long here. I can, I can talk for as long or as little as you'd like me to. So my role as State Broadband Director at the, at the Public Service Commission, and we do have a Wisconsin broadband office. We've got, you know, a couple of different staff on board. We've got some mapping staff. We've got some folks who deal with reimbursements for our grant program. But I think what's most of interest probably right now is our broadband expansion grant program. And that's a program aimed at expanding broadband infrastructure in unserved and underserved areas of the state. So we actually are, you know, the grant program has been in existence for seven years now, a better part of a decade, and the funding levels associated with that program have grown over time. But we are actually in the middle of our fiscal year 2021 grant round right now. We actually, applications were due December of last year. And we're going to be awarding applications in the coming weeks for those fiscal year 2021 grants, grant applications. So typically what is happening is that, you know, an internet service provider, some sort of private entity is applying for applications. We do prioritize public-private partnerships, so we do like to see that. We think that that leads to more successful outcomes. Oftentimes having that local input, that local influence and local skin in the game for an application. So our current round, we're expecting to award in the next couple of weeks. And some might have seen that the governor has proposed additional funding for that program and his executive budget. Obviously still has to go through the legislature and the traditional budget process, but we do anticipate subsequent grant rounds to take place. Exact timing and funding levels are still obviously to be determined depending on the budget process, but we're definitely hopeful for, for funding for that program. So that might be something that folks explore in the near future, in the future, is that a grant program? I can, you know, talk more about eligibility and those kinds of things. If you'd like me to, I'd be happy to go down that path, but you know, in the interest of time, I don't want to go too deep. So, but I certainly can if you'd like me to. I'll, I'll turn it back over unless folks have questions or thoughts or, you know, like I said, I'm, I, I work with this kind of broadband world day in and day out. So I'm happy to answer questions, you know, hear thoughts, bounce ideas around, or, you know, we can kind of just go from there. So let me know how I can be of most help.
Okay, so let me take this and say, if you have a question of Jaren, in some way, raise your hand. That's difficult for people I can't see. But Jen, my first question would be, when you said, who's eligible to apply for these grants? Are cities eligible or do you have to be an internet service provider?
So on their own, the way the statute, so it's all really set forth in state statute. It's one ninety-six dot five oh four, if you're curious. And we do have a webpage. I can share that as well. Public political subdivisions are not eligible to apply solely on their own. They do have to have, you know, like I said, a, a private partner or an otherwise eligible entity to, you know, form that public-private partnership to apply for the funds. So they cannot solely apply on their own.
Okay, I'm looking kind of across. Kathy.
Yeah, um, Adam, maybe I could throw this back to you. And I appreciate having individuals here that are going to help explain maybe what our options are. Could you do a real quick abbreviation of exactly what do we have? I mean, so that, you know, I mean, I know what we have is lacking, but just explain maybe in layman's terms what the, what the community actually looks like.
Okay, just a minute. Let's make a distinction between what we have. In fact, I don't believe the city has much at all. And I think that's a real distinction we need to draw. There may be services in the city, but they aren't provided by any partnership with the city. So Adam, with that as a footnote, I don't want anybody going away thinking that the city has is an ISP.
Right.
Okay.
Nope. So, but yeah, so I can kind of elaborate. So from the city standpoint, you know, obviously as a community overall for Platteville, you know, one of the issues we have with being in the Driftless Region is with, you know, connectivity and reliability. So it obviously causes issues where depending on where you are in the region, you know, some people have very good internet service and some people do not. So from an internet service provider standpoint, there is really only one right now that is in the region and that is Sentrylink. Otherwise, there are, you know, some other providers that are out there as far as satellite. But the issue with that is, you know, depending on where you are and whether or not it can bounce off of a signal, it's either not, you're either not able to get that as a resident or, you know, again, it's this kind, it's this reliability issue or redundancy issue that keeps to occur. So that really caused the city to kind of look at different ways of how it could take on internet. So what we have is we have PCAN, which is the, and I believe I saw Bill hiding around here somewhere. There he is. He's one of our members on the PCAN group, which is the Platteville connecting, you know, community network. And that is, that is a separate network that is specifically between the city, the university, the school district, and the hospital. Where because of the issues we were seeing with, you know, internet reliability, we went after a grant and essentially was able to put in fiber that was access to our specific locations. The problem obviously that the city has with that grant is at this point in time, that is not able to be utilized by residential means. So it can only be used by nonprofits or specifically, you know, for businesses. And we do have PCAN is actually going to be coming in on the twenty-third here and doing a presentation will be another work session where they'll be speaking to kind of that whole process. So the council and kind of residents can understand that. But yeah, as Council President Doss indicated, you know, we currently do not have any type of agreements or anything in regards to, you know, contracts with providers or anything like that. So those are things obviously that, you know, we're going to start to be looking at is what can we do to, you know, allow our residents to have, you know, multiple alternatives or options. I am aware that there is a, in our industrial park, there is a provider that does provide services, but they right now are just really in the commercial market. There's been some discussions potentially about whether or not they could go into the residential. So that's something that obviously we'll be discussing further, but that's kind of a fifty thousand foot level of where things are at. So, you know, what we consistently as staff and obviously as council members, not speaking for them, but kind of summarizing what we tend to hear, just so Jaren, I think Danielle and Chris, you kind of get the total picture, is it can be very spotty where you could be on a street and one house, you know, every thirty seconds, they're losing their internet signal to the next house is perfectly fine. So it, it varies all throughout the entire city and kind of throughout Grant County where some places have no problems, you know, the closer they are to a fiber network, their internet tends to work better. And even with that, some people that are near that fiber network have the same problem. So it's kind of this overarching issue that, you know, we continue to have, which only has been obviously expanded. As I'm sure you guys are hearing from, you know, multiple communities and throughout the state with COVID and with the, you know, these type of meetings and everything kind of going more virtual. It's a concern because, you know, we hear constantly from businesses that they're having issues where, you know, their system is down and it's down. We're not talking, you know, a couple of hours. It can be days that they're having issues getting, you know, backup. And the same thing from a resident standpoint, when they're trying to work from home or, you know, they have kids that are, that are doing things virtually, it's been a real hiccup. So that's what's really spurred kind of the necessity for the city to take this on as a strategic plan item and see what can we do? You know, what, as you indicated, what partnerships can we go off of where we know as a, as a government entity, you know, there's certain grants we're not going to be eligible for. But whether it's partnerships that we can look at, I think those are some of the things that we really want to dive into to see what we can do. I think Bill has a, I see Bill's got his hand raised.
Bill? Unmute yourself, Bill.
All these technical things. Okay, the first thing I want to do is go back to Barb's original question, who can apply for this? Since the Platteville Community Area Network is affiliated with the city and the city is a member of PCAN, I'm assuming that PCAN would be eligible to apply for grants from the PSC on behalf of the city or as part of the city. Were, were a nonprofit organization?
Without nonprofit organizations would be eligible to apply for the funds, just at surface level. That's my understanding of it. Now I do, I, I don't know enough about PCAN to, to, to fully kind of flesh this out, but if, if they can serve, you know, residentially, I don't know if they can. Okay, that's kind of what I assumed. Then that would, that would be a potential, you know, issue when it comes to actually, you know, providing service to residents, if I'm understanding correctly.
But if we were to partner with a internet service provider that could provide internet service to residential individuals, then perhaps that would be a thing. If you look, if you want to, PCAN is like all the other cans that are across the state. We essentially own infrastructure, fiber that runs within this, the city. And we can share and we can hook people up to that fiber who are other nonprofits. But they have to find their own internet service provider. Now, the second thing I have, the second question is, and this I, I don't know who is the expert to answer this, but we obviously have fiber throughout the state as a means to deliver signal. You also have satellites and you have wireless communications. My question is, where is the future? Is the future in hardwired fiber? Or is it in satellite? Or is it in wireless delivery? And I should caveat that by saying in rural areas such as where we're at.
I, I can I can, I can try to answer that. And there's, there's certainly a lot of you know, potential, you know, for opinion in this response. So I'll just say, I think it's probably fairly agreed upon that, that fiber would, would be the gold standard. The, you know, the most future-proof solution. That said, it is an expensive technology to deploy and also, you know, takes time to deploy. You know, there are fixed wireless services that, you know, are, are meant to deliver, you know, residential and business broadband separate from, you know, commercial mobile services. There's also emerging technologies with low earth orbit satellites. Another, you know, there's other emerging technologies that are really kind of evolving before our eyes. And I do think that there's some promise there, but in my mind, fiber is still likely the most future-proof best solution. That said, it is expensive and there's a significant expense that comes along with that. And when you're dealing with lower population densities, difficult terrain, the business case to deploy that expensive technology can become difficult. So that's where folks might explore other technologies potentially. And you know, there, we try to remain, we do remain technology neutral at the PSC, but we do like to see, you know, communities and providers thinking in a scalable sense, you know, how will this technology, how will this service grow into the future? So we're, we're very much pro high levels of service, high speeds, download and upload. But we do remain as best we can technology neutral. So like I said, there's a lot of room for opinion in that response. I think, you know, you might talk to someone else who might give you a different answer. But that's, that's kind of my take at it.
So based what, upon what you just said, it would seem to me that a solution that the city should take a look at is a hybrid system that provides fiber connections to strategic spots within the community. And then wireless signal that might radiate from those places. Because putting fiber into the community is terribly expensive. Now, having said that, our primary internet service provider has essentially put fiber throughout the city. They did it in an, in an effort to gain market share on a cable TV service, which has since
evaporated.
Not proved to be economically feasible or, or worth anything. They've, they've essentially shut down any new customers to this. But the fiber still exists. And I will say that I think the city needs to do a little bit of work in determining what the real problem is. As Adam just said a few minutes ago, it's spotty. One person in a house may get, have no problems with their internet. Their next door neighbor may have continuous outages. And I know there are other factors. I had spotty, well, first of all, I have fiber connection to my house from the local internet service provider here in the city. A few months ago, I put in a new router. Prior to that, if I was watching something on television that was streaming, it would probably go off two, three times during a one hour show. And I'd have to go back, reboot the whole system and continue on back on. With a new router, knock on wood, the system has been working without having to reboot. So just by my single experience in this one data point, I questioned whether or not some of our problems might be routers, because I know that the router provide by the, provided by the local internet service provider as a package can only maintain a few, three or four perhaps connected devices. And I know in my house, I have several connected TVs. I have several connected echo dots, telephones, all these other things. There's probably close to twenty connected devices in this house. And not all twenty are being used at one time, but by the virtue of being connected, they had over grossed that local ISP provider.
The router.
Router.
Okay, Bill?
Yes.
I'm going to ask if there are some others that have questions and we still have two more presenters.
Okay.
So I'm going to interrupt you. So Jaren, do you have addition, do you have a response? And Kathy, was your question answered by Adam?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. And now, Jaren, do you have additional response relative to broadband expansion, expansion grants? Or otherwise I think we need to probably hear from Chris and we probably need to hear from Danielle.
Yeah, I would, I would really quickly just say that I would encourage folks to consider the existing providers. You know, I do think, you know, there's, if a, if a provider already has fiber throughout, yeah, I'm not, still not totally clear to me, you know, at least portions of the city. I would encourage you to, to, to work with that provider or work with providers that already have some, some local presence. That's just, you know, and when we're thinking about planning purposes, I do think it's important to, to talk to providers and talk to providers that have some local presence already. So I would just encourage you to do that. But I would certainly, you know, Danielle and Chris have a wealth of knowledge as well, so I don't want to take all this time.
Okay. And so the other thing that you said about the PSC was you had mapping capabilities. So if we asked you, would you be able to provide a map of where fiber is in Platteville? Is that the kind of mapping capability you have?
We do not have maps of fiber infrastructure. We do have a Wisconsin broadband map that shows, it's actually at the census block level service across the state. But we don't have actual fiber, fiber infrastructure maps.
Okay. All right, who's next? Danielle, are you next?
I would be happy to step up and, and speak up. So thank you, Barbara. So Adam, I think what I, if you would like, I can certainly just dive in a little bit on the broadband connectors pilot that WEDC conducted through the last quarter of last year. Would, would that be okay with, with everybody in this group?
Yep.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you. So I'm not sure if everybody knew about this, but last year, starting in about September, WEDC had conducted the broadband connectors pilot. Basically that was non-financial assistance. It was technical assistance that we provided to a cohort of six communities in the state. The reason we did only six communities is that it was a pilot project or a pilot program that we were working on. We had two personnel who were providing the technical assistance and with the timeframe that we were looking in, which was going to be, it was about three months, but it was going to be about two months or so of active working time. We weren't sure exactly what we were going to be able to cover in that timeframe. So we've delimited to the six communities. We worked with two counties, one commu, a, a community, I should say, two tribes and a school district. So those were the entities that were chosen in the cohorts. And basically when we worked with them, we kind of took a baseline of what they had done in broadband at the beginning and then kind of where they were looking to go towards the end. And that varied with each community. Some had specific needs for students in their district. Other had a very large geographic area that they were trying to figure out, how do they start getting service into these different areas? Others were just trying to say, we had something, how do we kind of get this up and running again? And where do we start? Others had just a very specific need. They were looking for, you know, funding to be able to do an assessment of their county. So it really varied across the, where everybody was in. And what we did was we basically sat down with them. We got, you know, kind of where they had been, what they had done. And then we just really fine tuned that technical assistance with all of them. And in that process, we had developed a, a basically a kind of a best practice way of, of moving forward for communities who are looking at broadband and how to get it expanded into their communities. We are working and partnering with the Public Service Commission and with UW Extension to create this program on a more of a permanent basis and a long-term basis to continue to help communities. What we learned through the process is that some communities will have like one-off questions as they're moving forward. Other communities are going to probably need a little more assistance to, to work on things. And so having that partnership and having that program in a long-term capacity is, is really important. With, with that being said, I've heard some of the questions that you guys had been asking. So before I dive into some of the things that we looked into, I'd like to see if anybody has any questions from me regarding that, that pilot program first off.
Pilot program questions, wave your hand if you have any questions. Otherwise, were any of the communities close by us?
One of the tribal nations has, has territory that is relatively close, I believe. I'm not quite sure how close though. So, and then there's one just up the river, literally up the riverways.
As far as the community, Danielle, did, were, can you kind of elaborate on where they were as far as like, did they have infrastructure already in place or were they pretty much starting from square zero or?
So all of them had, to some extent, some infrastructure. Some really needed to, to get it built out. Some had, you know, they were looking at like you guys where they're like, it's really spotty. We have these significant areas where there is nothing available. Some had terrain where it was really, really tricky. And again, they were saying, if you go into the city center, it's covered, but the moment you go a few miles out, there is nothing there. And, and some had like, they have really good coverage, but they do have these pockets where there is either nothing or it's very, very spotty or it just isn't reliable. So I would say that a lot of them are probably very similar in the issues that you're seeing.
Eileen, you had a question?
Well, I was going to ask a similar question, Danielle, and are you continuing this pilot program? If we were interested, how would we go about applying to get this service?
Good question, Eileen. Thank you for asking that. So WEDC is not running the program. However, with that being said, UW Extension is, is looking to bring that program into their agency and they will then be working and they're taking a lot of the information that we had pulled together and the data that we pulled together and they're going to be carrying that forward. So as a, as a side though, in my position and with my background in telecommunications, I am here for people who have questions and to provide that, that information and that knowledge. Chris Stark, who's with UW Extension, he also has a lot of that information and that knowledge. And then obviously Jaren does too. And Jaren's got an entire team behind him. So, you know, a lot of, you've got basically three different agencies that you can go to and talk to. And we're looping each other in. So, you know, like Adam said, he reached out to me and I was like, let's bring Jaren in and, you know, let's bring UW Extension in. So we're all working together and we're, we are communicating. But as far as WEDC, the pilot ended in December, but we are working with Extension to bring that in a permanent capacity or a little bit more of a permanent capacity.
And I guess my other, oh, sorry, could I have one more question, Barb? Darren mentioned the map. I was looking on my phone and, and I see that there are broadband maps. One of the comments that we've heard is that sometimes it looks like our area, for example, is well-covered by these maps, but all that means is maybe there's a company that's put lines through, but they aren't really connecting to anybody. So it might look like from here to our next city that we've got everybody covered and it really doesn't work that way. And it appears also that the information you, you receive from the providers is voluntary. So maybe there are some providers that you're not aware of or. So maybe there are some providers that you're not aware of or. I I don't really know, but. So I I think the maps are helpful, but I think they're also frustrating for us because, you know, if one house out of fifty has an internet. Service and the other forty-nine are not served for whatever reason. Um, I I think those maps we've been told can sometimes be misleading. I don't know if Darren wants to answer that or or Aaron or.
Danielle or Chris?
Yeah.
Jaren, did you want me to go ahead and and step into that or did you want to tackle that? Cause I know that's with your guys' team.
I'll go ahead and respond to that, um. We're, we're, we're very well aware, uh, you know, broadband mapping as a whole. Is still lacking, uh, I referenced it earlier, but uh that data is based off of census blocks. Um, and it's really not granular enough to determine, you know, a certain service level at a particular address. Or even, you know, depending on the size of the census block, a street section. Um, so we're certainly very well aware of those uh limitations and and we take those into consideration when we're. You know, let's say when we're determining, you know, which grants should be funded and shouldn't be funded. Um, so it's certainly something that we're aware of, I do still think that the maps provide a resource kind of a. Uh, what providers might be worth considering, uh, and then you kind of have to whittle it down from there, depending on where their actual infrastructure might be. But it's certainly, you know, I I I understand those frustrations, that's probably the most common. Complaint or question or inquiry that we receive as an office is, you know, your maps aren't accurate. Um, we do utilize the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission data at the federal level. Uh, and we do have some voluntary data as well that we try to leverage, you know, our partnerships with providers across the state to get. More accurate and more timely data, but that's certainly still a work in progress, so uh I I I hear you.
If I could just do one follow-up, Barb, um, so if if, for example, we were to apply for a grant. And it appeared by the map that we're well-covered, that certainly would be taken into consideration, though, that perhaps we're not as well-covered as a map might indicate. Okay, thanks.
We uh, we we encourage applicants to uh tell us the state of existing broadband within their proposed applicant or proposed project territory, so uh we do encourage that.
Okay.
So Danielle? Anything else or are you?
No, I I, you know, I think that, you know, from what I'm I'm hearing from. From all of you, there there are some things that can be done, uh, especially if you're looking towards a Public Service Commission. Uh, expansion grant, um, there are other funding options out there, they're a little more difficult to be awarded on. Um, one of them is the the reconnect program, but like I said, they're they're pretty difficult and a lot of that has to do. With the amount of coverage that is already available in the state, um, and I see Chris had nodded his head too, so he's he's well aware of it as well. Um, but you know, some of the things that, you know, that we were looking at as we're doing the pilot, um, you know, is is. A- as you're looking to expand, you know, one of those first things is to really create. Uh, that task force who will be engaged in in working with expansion uh towards the expansion of broadband in your area. Um, those are people that would be maintaining the relationships and the communicate communications with, you know, the Public Service Commission with us, with Extension. Um, and working with closely with Extension as as they're, you know, start providing the technical assistance, other stakeholders. Um, economic development organizations, planning commissions and the providers. Um, one of the things that, you know, one of the next things that you guys can do is to identify and map your gaps. Um, you know, you talked a bit about the mapping being a little bit off, uh, from what you're seeing. There are surveys that are available on the Public Service Commission, I know there are other, like the PSC has done surveys a few times now. Um, there are assessments that can be purchased um to to kind of get a little better of of an idea of what is needed and where it's needed. Um, so that's certainly something that can be done, they they can address, you know, adequacy, so you know, are there speed gaps? Is the speed sufficient for the community? Uh, is service affordable and that's kind of a subjective question. Um, are there there areas where it's not affordable? Um, adoptability, if if there is a higher take rate. Providers are much more willing to provide service into an area as opposed to an area where there is a a lower take rate. Um, so those are just, you know, some of the things that that a survey can can cover. Um, once that survey, once that information has been gathered on where the needs are, it's identifying what are the goals, what is the, what are the goals of the community? To expansion, are, is there critical infrastructure that's that's not covered? Um, is there a priority need that needs to be covered? Is there underserved or unserved areas that need service? And if you're going to look at those, it's where where are you going to start with that? Um, are there areas with service that just doesn't work, you know, so if you have a a bunch of students in one area where they can't do remote learning? You know, that that could be very critical, do you have areas where telehealth is critical, then you'll be looking at those. Um, you know. Are there, are there, you know, do you have an area where it's satellite, are you looking to try to get something else in there, identifying that? Um, so it's really kind of identifying where do you want to go and where do you want to go first? Um, and then working with, you know, identifying providers, so. You'd mentioned, Adam had shared with us that you have one provider predominantly in the area. And then you have satellite providers as well that can provide, and it sounds like you have a a cable internet uh provider as well. In your area, okay.
Same as the, as the internet provider.
Okay, okay, so. The the providers don't have uh set territories, I mean, they have a coverage area that is predominant, that has been theirs for a long time. And Jaren, please feel free to reach out and correct it me if there's anything I'm saying that's wrong. Um, Chris, same with you. Um, so, but they can cross over and for a lot of them, when they are looking into moving into new territories, they're really looking on the return on their investment to be able to make that expansion. And so what a community can do is help them make that case, so whether it's the current incumbent. Which is the ones that you have there, or is it somebody else that you're looking to work with? We have uh over about a hundred providers in the state, I forgot the exact number. And you know, any one of them, you can reach out to any of them and and have that conversation and say, hey, we're looking at this. Now, they're not all going to be willing to do so, but you know, you can at least have that conversation to start, and it's always best to start with the incumbent provider first. And then what we look at is just kind of, you know, what are the the funding resources and the options that are available um to look at? And obviously, the Public Service Commission has their broadband expansion grants, which is definitely, it's. I I don't believe that there are a lot of states who have this program, so we're very fortunate um to have the program, we're very fortunate that it's with the Public Service Commission. Uh, and like Jana said, they've been doing this since, I think it was twenty thirteen or so, so it's been a few years. Um, but you know, pulling that information together and you've got a really good team here who can help you, you've got Jaren, you've got UW Extension. You know, Chris has a lot, ton of knowledge, W E D C has some knowledge, although we always defer to the PSC and Extension because they know their program best. Um, and so it just, it it's looking at those grants and those opportunities that are there. There are some federal funding, um, there are some grants and some loans, like I said, they're difficult to get to. Uh, there's usually F S F C C funding that typically goes to the provider only. Um, there's E D A funding, you know, again, you know, it's really going to be based on um that that percentage that is unserved. Um, and so, you know. There are a lot, a lot of different parts and pieces and and we can, each one of us can probably get you connected to some people to talk to them, to. Research if these would be viable funding options for you. And then looking at. Grants where they require matching and most of them do require matching, there are different ways of of pulling that funding together for different communities and so. You know, we've looked at what some of those ideas are and they're, they're really just kind of a broad foraying to saying what can work. Um, and every community can then determine what will work for them. Um, so those are basically the steps that we, you know, we've worked with our. Technical assistance cohorts to say, these are sort of the steps that you can go through and applying for a PSC grant. And and it sounds real easy, it's five steps, it's pretty cut and dry. It's the details in there where a lot of that that work comes in and the creativity comes in. And that's where their partnerships with, you know, W E D C and our regional economic development directors within our team. Uh, for you guys, I believe it's Marie Steenledge, who is your RUD. Um, Barbara, I see you're you're nodding, so you know, Marie, that's great. Um, so it's, it's, you know, knowing those partners, working with your local E D Cs, locate, working with the regional E D Os. To kind of find these ways of being able to pull those grant, that grant matching funding together and. So that's kind of a lot to throw at you and that's about, you know, two months of technical assistance provided, so does anybody have any questions on that part?
I think Danielle. I don't see anybody waving their hand, so maybe we should move on to Chris.
Oh, thank you, it's hard to, hard to top all that, that we just got of a uh a a lot of uh. Knowledge there and I know Danielle and. Jaren have been saying that I'm a wealth of expertise, that may be true, but I'm trying to figure out what subject that's in right now, that's a, this is, if I can just figure that out, but. But let me, let me start off by asking you a question, though, do you have, I haven't uh. Heard this yet, do you have like a broadband, is there a task force or a group or a steering committee there? Or does the local economic development department, are they primarily trying to improve the broadband capacity in Platteville, or how does that work there?
Uh, I would say we don't have a task force and uh this is an initial. Our initial set of meetings to determine how to proceed. Uh, I would say that all of us on the council have read post after post and perhaps created post after post. About service and lack of service and. Uh, all kinds of, you know, different things, so. I think and and there is a perception, there has been a perception in the community that somehow the city. Is in charge of this.
Okay, but you still need um, how, I guess, uh, probably on the the on the. Side of infrastructure deployment, of course, Jaren and and Danielle have covered it and are familiar with the. The PSC, uh, the Public Service Commission grants and Danielle mentioned the possibility of. Rural connectivity grants, which are from the funded by the US Department of Ag, the USDA and the E D A, there are others. Um, but what I am most familiar with, and we've, we've certainly looked at, is deploying uh infrastructure and broadband infrastructure. In both Vilas and Forest Counties in the Northwoods of Wisconsin, I'm coming to you from Eagle River right now, so. Like your area to some degree, it's a, it's a rural area. Dominated by tourism with a high summertime peak and a high draw on broadband. And most of the deployment that we have managed to. Let's say have an effect on successfully has come in working as a group, first of all, in Vilas County with the Vilas County Economic Development Corporation. And we did work with a couple, we were fortunate to have enough to have a couple of local providers here. Um, Century Link certainly does have a presence on the eastern side of the county. And, or excuse me, the western side of the county and Frontier on the, I don't think you have Frontier down there in southwest Wisconsin, I don't think, in in Grant County. Um, but you go, we had two local providers, one's named SonicNet and one's named ChoiceTell. And worked with them and acquired some of those very good uh public service uh commission grants. Um, to the tune of, well, uh, for uh ChoiceTell, the first one. Was Little Land O Lakes, Wisconsin, Annie'd up two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, if you know where Land O Lakes is. It's rights, a little community of eight hundred plus, right smack on the on the state line with the Upper Peninsula of Michigan. And that little community said, okay, we're going to put in two hundred and forty-nine thousand, so a quarter million dollars of their taxpayers' money to match. The PSC grant of two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And that started ChoiceTell, who happens to be my next door neighbor here, the owner. But ChoiceTell deploying eighteen miles of fiber infrastructure. In uh, in in Land O Lakes, because downtown Lando, Land O Lakes. Had absolutely no broadband, you still, by the way, you still can't make a cellphone call very easily there, but that's, that's a different. But they did not have capable broadband at all. Uh, people were using satellite and they were less than, and I'll had, if, please remind me to add a caveat to that satellite, there is a recent success story on something, but. At any rate, I want to stick with the broadband and fiber deployment infrastructure in downtown Lando. And when they did. They garnered a success, a new business in that little community right away of somebody who was. A constant visitor to the community over the years, she didn't grow up there, but she was familiar with it. Kept coming back there and had a cottage up there every year, the businesses win Chicago, it's called Aaron Solutions, you can look it up. And I don't know how many uh employees, Marcia, the CEO Marcia has right now. But they started off with ten to twelve people making around twenty dollars an hour, and that's good wages in this rural community. Up here, so they had immediately had a payoff as a result of their broadband experience and as I say. Fiber along the, well, a certain route in Land O Lakes and the rest of it is. Uh, uh wireless, uh, and it really, because of the cost right now and and Jaren hit the nail on the head, I mean, the the gold standard is fiber. If you can get it, but in a rural area, when we're flatter than you are, so it may be more realistic, that's a, that's a consideration here. We're flatter than you are for the most part, but we do have those trees in the way all the time. Um, and that affects it, but wireless has to be an option probably in rural areas. Um, because of the expense and everything. Now, let me add one caveat to the satellite that I was going to mention. This is not from my personal experience, but but I know that people around here have tried satellite and they've been frustrated over the years, they keep. Telling me that, well, my son would start a business and he would, he keeps coming up here and he would start a business, he has a second home here. But for better broadband and it isn't there yet, we've tried satellite and it doesn't work. I did have somebody call me from Saint Germain, Wisconsin. Uh, who had purchased a cottage, has actually owned eight cottages up here, so. Elon Musk's Starlink, and I'm not in the business of promoting necessarily, but worked well for him. For this reason, you do have a five hundred dollar initial investment for the equipment. And then, uh, after that, I think, I think his bill was about one hundred, Jaren or Danielle, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think his bill was one hundred dollars a month. After that, and he said it solved his problems even through the summer season, so that low earth orbit satellites that Jaren was talking about. Which is what that Starlink relies upon, uh, they had put so far. One thousand, as of the late February, one thousand low earth orbit satellites, I think their goal is closer to thirty thousand. Uh, satellites, but that might be an option to consider, it worked for this individual, again, I haven't tried it myself. Now, in Forest County. They were hurting for Forest County, the county seat is Crandon, the only county in the state with two tribal reservations. The Potawatomi and the uh SoCagan-Chippewatt-Mole Lake. That county was, I was, when I started to work in that county in in early twenty eighteen, I did get a lot of. Comments from businesses and educators and the the schools, especially the school, so the schools are served with broadband. Up here in the Northwoods, they're connected on the same program that you have that's connecting. But what isn't served is is the school administrators will tell me, Chris, our teachers and our students can't get it when they go home. And so that's been a problem and like the Crandon K through twelve school. Has had a, well, they've been meeting in person this year, but last year, when they closed in March, about a year ago this very week. Um, they were unable to, they had to set out the homework for the kids and they were basically unable to have classes for the last three months. So in Forest County, two years ago, we formed the Forest County, at that time called the Broadband Task Force. It later became the Broad, Forest County Broadband Commission. We worked at getting one of these PSC grants and we did to the tune of one point eight million dollars. Which in this case, Forest County saw the need so badly for the uh for better broadband. That we worked with a local provider who's a hybrid company called Northwoods Connect out of Rhinelander, brought them over, worked with them. And we, we, our goal was always one of these grants, we wrote one of these grants, and so we have a one point eight million dollar grant. And uh being deployed right now and recently, a few testimonials that certain parts of the county, people are online, they're hooked up. Now, I haven't, it's too early to say how good that is, I haven't gotten that yet, they were just happier than heck that they were hooked up. Uh, with uh with uh Northwoods Connect, and I think I better stop right there because I can talk forever, so please let me know if you have questions.
Chris, do you uh work for Extension throughout the state or do you work primarily just in the north? And which office do you work out, I mean, which part of UW Extension do you work out of?
Well, I'm, I do have to say in the past year, it has been ninety to ninety-five percent from home right here, which represents quite a change. Um, I didn't think I was going to like it in the beginning and now the, now I'm afraid I don't want to go back the other way. But uh, probably ninety to ninety-five percent from home, I do have an office. I do have an office in nearby Crandon in Forest County. And I am right now 50% for the state, working for the state. You also have a UW Extension educator in Grant County that I think is James Schneider. I think at one time he was the economic developer. So James may have, may be able to help and have some knowledge on this subject. I should also point out that in Iowa County, they, which I think is just immediately to the west of you, right?
To the north.
To the north, excuse me. They did a fairly comprehensive survey of, I don't know, I don't know how many people, but it of a broadband survey. And it gave them, I do have the questions here. And the UW Extension educator over there in that county and possibly the economic developer as well would have the, have the final results as to how many. But they sent it out to a lot of people and even asked them apart, where are you exactly? And income, some, you know, which in some cases, some people may not have wanted to answer. But they got quite a, quite a response to that, as I understand it. And so there, that will help them in their grant efforts.
And we know that educator too. I think it's Paul Rogie.
Actually, I hear through the grapevine, and I meant to mean to contact him, that Paul is maybe retiring, is what I hear. So that's true, huh? So that's, that's, that disappoints me because he's such a nice guy. But Barry Hotman is over there in Iowa County. If you, yeah.
Whatever, for Chris. Okay, so we have Chris, we have Danielle, and we have Jaren. And Adam, do you want to tell us what you've heard? Where you think our next step is, other than our next couple of interviews? Or work sessions, I guess?
Sure. So obviously, you know, some of the conversations we've had. So I've had a couple of preliminary conversations with, you know, it's not just the city. It's the county is looking at this as well. So I think that that's something that, you know, Bob Keeney is on this call. And that's something I think we're going to continue to kind of explore is how Platteville can partner, you know, with Grant County and look at potential ways there, which may strengthen our ability to go after grants, may strengthen that. We have reached out to, you know, not only, we've reached out to Century Link. So they are looking at coming potentially towards the end of the month and want to have an initial conversation with city staff and council leadership. So we're going to look at scheduling that officially. And kind of as, you know, Chris, Jaren and Danielle have indicated, really talk with them about, look, here's what we're hearing from the community. You know, you can, as you indicated, you know, Barb, there's plenty of people that are on Facebook, you know, routinely commenting on, you know, the issues that they're having. There's a dedicated Facebook page that we know about is against, you know, the internet provider. And every, you know, time there's something, there's people posting on there. So I think those are things we want to try to sit down with Century Link and try to bring to their attention. Obviously, you know, our next meeting here on the 23rd, we're planning to have Pecan come in and have them present and kind of explain their portion of things. So we can start explaining that to the public and understanding, you know, where we can go there. But then really, yeah, it's kind of this continual conversation of, you know, how we can work with, you know, the P S C with Wisconsin Economic Development, UW Extension. I'm looking at ways that we can continually be in the forefront of, of any grant potentials that are out there, looking at applying for those. And then reaching out to, you know, not only, you know, potentially Century Link, but if there are other providers that potentially could come into the area. We want to start, you know, actively looking at having those conversations because that is directly what was in our strategic plan, is looking at ways to, you know, number one is kind of, this is the starting point where we're bringing up information and trying to get a better understanding of kind of the current climate that Platteville's in. And then it's going to be building off that and going to the next step.
So a couple of things that I heard were where there has been some success, there have been some dedicated task force, commission, committee, group. I don't know what you want to call it, but somebody who kind of takes the charge and, and, and keeps on it. So I heard that. And I heard that survey information is perhaps finding out, in fact, what the true need, what the true difference is. I mean, Danielle talked about take rate, what's the take rate in our area? What's the break, what's the breakpoint in terms of payment? Bill talked about, are some of the issues that people are facing? Equipment issues that they, they just don't have router equipment that, that handles the number of devices they have. And so I think there's a lot of information there that we need to kind of process and come up with some ideas. And maybe Pecan will be helpful. And I see Bill is on. I don't know, Bill, if you're representing Pecan, Pecan, or if you're just representing yourself. But I don't think I see anybody else on. Would that be true?
Todd Law said he was going to be on, but maybe he couldn't make it. But yes, I'm here to take notes for Pecan.
Yeah, okay. All right, Kathy, do you have anything you want to add, any?
Um, no, not really add. I just really think that I would like us to look at pulling together a task force. Maybe more so than just members of the council.
Oh, yeah.
And, and get the county involved. I know that for a number of years, when I was at the chamber, we, the, the economic development partners would get together for our regular meetings. And the broadband issue always came up. And it seemed like we always had a brick wall because there was no one go to place to have help identify. And I think that is probably the ultimate, what I would ultimately like to see the council do. It's going to definitely be a process, but I definitely like the idea of establishing a task force.
And, and one with wide representation. Isaac?
Yes.
Isaac, do you have anything you'd like to add or suggest or?
No, just taking everything in tonight. So just taking everything in tonight.
Okay. Eileen?
No, I, I agree. Thank you for your information, Chris. Some of the examples you gave with students. And we know we have students who were parking next to our library because we had the internet on available for them to do that. They were sitting in their car doing their homework. So we know we have those issues. I think knowing that Iowa County has done a survey, I think we can find out more about that. And that will maybe help us accomplish that, give us something to go on. But I think, yeah, all three of you gave us a lot of good information. And it appears that if we can get some kind of organized group together, then we might be able to apply for a grant if we can identify what the grant really is needed for. And I think countywide, if we can do that, would be really great.
Jason, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just that I think it's going to be important to, to just try to do a real thorough assessment in terms of, you know, again, some of the areas that, that people have talked about, like, is it an equipment issue? Is it an infrastructure issue? Is it, you know, like, I, I think it's going to be really important to, to get a, as good of an assessment in terms of kind of helping us figure out, okay, what, you know, what direction do we go? You know, what, what do we need? What don't we need, that type of thing?
Okay. Ken?
I have no additions, but I appreciate the good ideas as to how to proceed. Thank you.
Okay. Robin?
Like Isaac said, just taking it in. Feel like we've had a lot of conversations on the subject, but not really feeling like I knew how to untangle it. So this feels really satisfying to start digging in and bringing people together on the conversation. The comments about the router, I guess that's a spin off that it would be nice if maybe there could be a community fund grant or something to look into providing some usable routers for households that can't manage to figure that out as far as how to upgrade. Or to insist that perhaps Century Link could provide better routers. I look forward to the conversation with Century Link, I would say. I think that's a relationship that needs some attention. So I'm glad that we are learning before we go into that conversation so we can ask better questions then. But thank you, the presenters.
Chairman Keeney, I don't generally go off council persons, but since you're at the, at our meeting tonight, I will ask, do you have any comments or questions that you would like to pose to Jaren, Danielle, or Chris?
Yeah, I'm sure that we've got some, some questions. I have my IT director Shane Drinkwater is on here too. We have had an initial conversation with Adam. And we are making traction and we are headed in a direction that I think is positive.
Okay. And, and Bob, do you guys have a task, a group that's going to work on this? Or would Shane be your lead? I mean, if we, if we start talking about a task force or an organized committee, or I don't know what you want to call it, a group, would it be you? Would it be Shane? Are there others that might have interest in exploring? I mean, certainly our economic development director, probably Ron or someone out of E D.
I'll let Shane take that question.
Aha, Shane.
If he's willing to, to share.
I think that, I think I would be interested in participating with you. I think that we need to have a partnership with all the communities to explore our various options and see where we can go. And ultimately lever, leverage each other's resources to get where we want to be.
Good.
We've got, we've got plenty more coming within the next couple of weeks. So I'm anxious to, to listen in on the Pecan meeting in a couple of weeks too.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, well, well, and, and we, and out of these meetings, we may hear of other people we should be talking to. For instance, we might call Barry and see if he might share the Iowa County story of their survey and what they, why they did it and what they want to accomplish and things, so.
Barbara, this is Danielle Jones.
Okay.
Another good resource would be the Town of Cross. The Town of Cross just recently did a survey themselves. They had a pretty good response rate. I can get the contact information of the person over to Adam so that he can get it to all of you guys. And, and she can talk to you a little bit about how they, they kind of, you know, work through a bunch of that and what they did. And then I'm also sending over a document to Adam that walks through a lot of the information that I've shared. And it, it does have some examples in there on, on some of the things that have been done, so.
Danielle, can you tell us where the Town of Cross is?
Yes, it is, it's right on the Mississippi River. I want to say that it's in Crawford County, but I could be wrong.
Really? Okay. The Town of
I think it's in Buffalo County.
Thank you, Jaren.
Okay, so it's, it's north of, it's north of La Crosse. Okay. Buffalo County. It's like, this is a new one for me, the Town of Cross. Well, folks, are there any staff that want to make a comment? Joe, Howard, Luke? I don't hear anybody jumping in. So I guess that we're about ready then to call this meeting to a close. We have another one for the council, starting at seven o'clock. Jaren, Danielle, and Chris, you don't need to be on that one, but this is the first of three meetings that the council has tonight. So, you know. Logan?
Logan? Yeah, I would just like to make, make a public comment. My wife and I own the dance studio in town. The old Elks, the old Elks Lodge. And so we've had, gone virtually this past year or so, we've had issues with our providers. So I guess just, I appreciate the city having an understanding or a good pulse of where the needs are right now. And it gives me optimism, I guess, moving forward, so.
Okay, well, Logan, thank you for joining us. And yes, I did notice that you, you're a new business owner, just in our, in our downtown district, not on, on Main Street, but pretty close. So welcome. All right, folks. I think what I need now, since this was an actual meeting, after we say thank you to Chris, Danielle, and Jaren, thank you all for joining us. And thank you to our partners at Grant County for joining us and for our local residents and staff. So I now need a motion so that we can take a break and then log back in for our next meeting. So do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Eileen?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by second, by Eileen and a second by Kathy to adjourn. Everybody in favor, just raise your hand so that we can see it in your computer. I think we got seven. So Adam, you can, you can say that was unanimous. And again, thanks to our presenters. And this conversation will continue. So thank you all.